All right. I'd like to bring the zoning commission, Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission, meeting for December the 3rd, 2020, to order.
Roll call. Mr. Axton?
Here.
Mr. Geist?
Here.
Ms. Wharton?
Here.
Mr. Han?
Yep.
Ms. Stalter?
Here. All right. Next on our agenda is to approve the agenda. You will all have this in, I think, for about a week now, right? If anybody have any change on it that you want to make? All right. Can I have a motion?
Actually, I would like to add some discussion at the end of the meeting about our meeting format. So if you all wouldn't mind discussing basically whether or not we want to continue to meet in person or if we should shift to Beaver Creek.
All right. Sounds reasonable.
We'll give you one minute.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So move.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended. Okay, so Bob?
I will second.
Okay.
Let's take a vote. Mr. Axton?
I think he said aye, but...
Did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Geist?
Aye.
Yes.
Ms. Wharton?
Yes.
Mr. Han?
Yep.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Top of our list this evening is a guest, two guests actually, here from the Miami Valley Conservancy District. Do we have any other introductory information that the staff needs to share with us before we get started?
Ed, do you want to maybe just give a brief intro?
Yes. A couple of months ago, the township trustees passed a proclamation in support of a celebration of the 50th anniversary of the scenic rivers declarations and the Little Miami being declared the first national scenic river east of the Mississippi and so forth. And proceeding from that support articulated by the trustees, two people who have for many years led the effort in to preserve, protect, and improve the use of the Little Miami River, especially in Green County, contacted us and asked for an opportunity to talk to this board about ways in which that official support could be translated into actual support in terms of the way we conduct our business. How do we write our legislation? How do we go about discussing issues related to river quality and river protection? And so on and so forth. This is where the rubber hits the road is with the zoning commission. And so I was pleased to put Bill and Hope on the agenda for that purpose. And they have, they'd like to talk to you about those issues. I think I've represented that fairly well. Is that correct? Thank you. So as I said, these two have been active for most of their lives in, most of their adult lives at least, in protecting water quality in the Little Miami River and deserve the thanks and admiration of everyone in Green County for what we have. And they're continuing to do so. So without any further ado, there you go.
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much for having us. We're delighted to be here. Several months ago, we helped the state celebrate the Stormwater Awareness Week and that led to us being here with you tonight. As you know, your reading last time was canceled and so our appearance then was canceled. But we are delighted to be here today and to work with you, to give you some ideas and to hear what you all are doing and how successful that's been in reducing the impact of stormwater on the Little Miami River. And I think Bill has a slideshow presentation that hopefully will come up somewhere.
Unfortunately, I...
Well, it's going to come up, but the handouts should be distributed. So everybody should have a copy of it. And I'm going to give you some more background information. I'm holding up in front of me the resolution which was signed by all three Green County Commissioners in support of Stormwater Awareness Week. And that was actually ran, it was a nationwide campaign. It actually ran from October 18th to October 24th. And most of these resolutions are pretty bland when you read them. But I encourage you to get a copy of this resolution and add it to your notebook. Your zoning officials, and this is something that needs to be a point of reference going forward. So because the key information is distilled extremely well in this resolution. And the resolution number is 20-10-15-5. And it's not long, I just want to read part of it. Whereas urban stormwater runoff impacts water quality in the Little Miami watershed in Green County, whereas population growth, residential and commercial development, and the resulting changes to the landscape will only increase stormwater quality concerns or, and water quality concerns throughout Ohio. Whereas it is currently recognized that control of stormwater quantity and quality must be effectively implemented, or most effectively implemented when people and organizations understand the related causes and consequences. That's why we're here tonight. And this is a charge for everybody in Green County from the Green County Commission. When they got on board, I think they charged not just Hope and I and the Little Miami watershed network, they charged all the townships and all the cities and all the appointed officials to do everything you can to inform, educate, and help control stormwater runoff. Okay, so this is an important document and beyond tonight, beyond the few minutes we spent talking about this tonight, this should be something that you refer to as you update your zoning resolution. I sent you a handout and the most important thing about that handout is page one.
So before you continue...
And if you look at the graph on page one, you start to get a feel for how the stormwater problem is increasing in magnitude.
Mr. Scheinman, if you have a PowerPoint, you'd be able to share it to us by bringing it up on your computer and clicking the Share Screen button in the Teams interface.
Yeah, but I don't have this saved in PowerPoint format, so if I add...
Just refer to your handout.
We're referring to our...
So if somebody has it, they can bring it up there, but it's not saved in a Microsoft PowerPoint format. We are not from the Miami Conservancy District. The data on where were the Little Miami watershed network, but the data on slide one is from the Miami Conservancy District who has rainfall gauges spread all around the dam sites and intermediate areas which they monitor. So even though the rainfall on this chart didn't specifically come from rain gauges in Green County, it's a good enough proxy for us to see what we're up against. So does anybody have this where they can screen share it?
Sir, we're looking at it currently on our screen. I can share a screen to you guys if you're all agreeable.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
So...
You know, where were the documents? It's over there. There it is.
I'll talk about it while he's trying to get it up. And what you see is the summarized rainfall data, because after all, we're talking about stormwater awareness, rainfall data from 1945 all the way through 2019. So this was just recently updated by Miami Conservancy District. And when you see this graph, just think, starting in 1990, so starting in 1990, we break the trend line and have been going up constantly since then. And as is showing on his cursor there. And as we know, we live in Green County. I don't have to tell anybody, any of you, about the effects of flooding that we've all been facing. And we can go into, you know, what are the reasons for that? Everything from, we have a weather, global climate now in the last decade, decade and a half, and it's continued to get wetter and wetter. And we have more and more impervious surfaces. But we're also losing more and more floodplain, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail. But just, this graph is a wake-up call. I saw it the first time last year and I was shocked. How about you, Hope? What did you...
The same way.
It's funny.
And when you think that it's a three-year, each little dot is three-year average, you really know that it varies a little bit, but it's going up constantly and will continue to do so.
So on the next page and on the rest of the pages, depending on how much time we have to talk, I can take you through there. I tried to put reference material in there. So Hope and I have used this presentation one other time. And it just, this verbiage just summarizes all the bad things that stormwater does. And these are all things we know. So either one of us can talk about these in agonizing detail if you want. But at this time tonight, you probably don't need that. I can say that our network, the Little Miami watershed network, and the Little Miami Conservancy, and the Little Miami River Cleaners, and a handful of other people, over many decades, have been doing our individual parts, sometimes coordinating, sometimes working as individuals, trying to improve the Little Miami River. And as you know, it's the first national scenic river designated in Ohio. And we don't have, we only have three national scenic rivers dedicated in all of Ohio. And we're on the list of scenic rivers with some you might know, like the Snake and the Colorado and the Rhinebrand and some other amazing ones. And a couple of hundred small ones that I've never even heard of before. So it's a, it's an important achievement, but it's nothing guaranteed. And as development intensifies, the gains we've made aren't guaranteed. You know, we can make a pun and say that we just finished celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Little Miami River being named the National Scenic River. We don't want that to be the high watermark. But there was, that was a pun. We don't want that to be the high watermark of river quality. We have to work even harder as development pressures continue and, you know, the workforce, the volunteers, and the people who volunteer for boards, like your zoning board, I mean, it's in your hands. So I'm going to do the quick version. I'm going to go on to the next page. So we can talk about that. Hope you want to jump in here and ask questions? Anybody have anything that they want to ask right now before we look at the next page?
No.
I mean, are you all with me on what's happening and how important it is and that kind of thing?
Yeah. And what I can tell you, actually, it's kind of fortuitous that you're speaking to us tonight because what's on our agenda is in fact an update to the code specifically designed to kind of combat these issues. We've got language that we're putting in to allow us to essentially not issue permits for improvements in drainage easements or stormwater easements.
Thank, was your religious person or not? Thank God. Okay. I mean, I mean, that's our mission is to, you gave us time. I mean, we want to thank you for doing that and we want to help you any way we can. I mean, so I'll just say, one of the things that, I'm not up to date, but one of the things that, and I'm not up to date in everything happening in Beaver Creek Township anymore, but about seven or eight years ago, when we first started hearing about the plans for development, I don't want to use any names here, but let's just say all the land downhill from the airport, okay? And the plans to develop that and the loss of floodplain that was going to happen, there was quite a bit of floodplain filling that was being proposed there. And a bumper sticker I love, I finally got one, I saw on Hope's vehicle several years ago. It says, "We all live downstream." And every square foot of floodplain that's lost upstream, somebody downstream's getting more water. And so I was part of a group of people, most of them were from Sugar Creek Township, but not all of them, and we went to the Green County Commission. And we asked them to put in the county zoning regulations a net loss of floodplain. So it goes by different things, but compensatory storage is one of the phrases you might be familiar with. And we made a strong case, we made two presentations in front of them, and in a work session, we lost that by a two to one vote. They were close to putting in compensatory storage and we didn't get it done. And what they told us was, it's up to, the way they rationalized it is, it's up to, we want to see it done in the townships first. If you think compensatory storage is so important, get it done in the townships. Get all this stormwater stuff done in the townships and then if we see there is enough people behind it, you can come back and talk to us at some point in the future. I don't know where that stands today. I've moved out of the township, I'm no longer involved in zoning. So I don't know whether Beaver Creek Township ever put compensatory storage in. I'm going to shut up and listen to what you have to say, Ed, or somebody else.
Well, so I can tell you that currently we do not have compensatory storage as part of our zoning code, but it is, we're working on a kind of an ominous update of the code. It's something that my staff and I have been working on for a couple of weeks now. Plans to continue for the next few months. And that is one of the things that has been suggested. You know, it's not a slam dunk for us, it's a difficult, it's difficult language to write and enforce, but it is something that we are looking at regarding Article 15, which is the floodplain overlay. So I hope that gives you some insight into kind of where it's at here in the township. Not currently available, but something that's on our radar.
So what I can do, what I think I can do is if you want to look at a best-in-class compensatory storage zoning article, I can supply you a model of that, I think. Okay, so I have to dig back into my resources, but I think I can give you one if you want to consider it. And you can, I mean, it's been reviewed by attorneys and it's in place in Ohio and in several other townships. And so if you want that document, I'll do my best to try to get it to you.
Yeah, I will absolutely reach out to you following our meeting here. Maybe not this evening, but here soon. And I might ask you to join us on a Teams meeting while we discuss Article 15. I mean, that's, we would love to have your kind of expertise in on that discussion, absolutely.
Okay, that's great. I don't know the scope of that article, but I'd be glad to help. Okay, so I mean, compensatory storage is just one tool. There's lots of other things. And impervious surface is a big problem, the amount of impervious surface that keeps growing and growing. And none of these fixes are cheap. If they were cheap and easy, they would have been done before now. And they all will impact the cost to developers to develop things. But you know, whether you love or hate George Ober Jr., and I actually respect George Jr. I've had a lot of dealings with him over the years. And when we were fighting the cornerstone, I think I was chairman of the zoning board at that time at Sugar Creek Township, the Dilly property thing. We were in meeting after meeting with George Jr. And in one meeting, he just said, you know, "You're asking me to do this stuff all after the fact." He said, "If you had it in your zoning resolution, you know, before I bought the property or purchased the options," and you know, it would have been a level playing field. All the developers, everybody knows what the ground rules are in advance. And so from a developer's standpoint, they need it there beforehand. Whatever you do in your Article 15, they need it there beforehand. We were way behind the curve when we were coming in. I hope you were in some of those meetings, I think.
Oh, yeah.
With George Jr. And we're coming in with this long list of things that we wanted to, we thought would have a, would help maintain the water quality in the Little Miami because we saw just huge runoff problems coming from the cornerstone development. And you know, when he said that, he was right. I mean, we, you know, we should have been working just as hard on the Sugar Creek Township zone. Go ahead.
And what we predicted is really coming true, is true. We're seeing a lot more runoff from that creek that starts in the cornerstone development, so...
Yes, possible.
Hardscape is really detrimental and sediment runoff is even more detrimental.
Yeah, so we're digressing here, but if you just, every time that one of you goes over the Little Miami, whether it's on a bridge, if you're lucky enough to be able to see the water from a bridge, I don't want to get into conspiracy theories, but you know, I think the days when people could see the rivers and streams they passed over helped them have more awareness. We'll call it watershed awareness. Today, we drive over these things and they don't even know we're driving over water in many cases. But if you get a chance to look, all the banks, it's hard to say all, but in this case, all the banks, they're being extremely downcut by the quick rise and fall of this runoff. And the bank erosion and the downcut, the steep muddy banks, they're really a problem for the fish and insect life that live in this stream. And also the erosion, it's just stuff's falling in like crazy. Go ahead, somebody else speak.
Yeah, I'm fortunate enough to live on the Little Miami River and downstream from you all. And we're losing about a foot a year of bank and lost to like 200-year-old sycamore trees in the last three years and have another one that's getting very close to falling because of the undercut of the bank. And you know, it's, you either pay now or you pay later. And I can tell you to repair that bank and try to build it up is very expensive.
And I mean, these costs, these costs are kind of hidden from us, but they're out there. If you look at what Green County Highway Department is spending to deal with floodwater and erosion control on some of these where they're eating into roads that they have to maintain, I mean, we're talking, I tried to get a figure and I can't get a figure because I don't think anybody knows how to round up the total figure. But just in Green County, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars at least to deal with stormwater and these, I'll call them rainlogs, these floodbeds.
One of the things that I think has the promise is what you all have done in Beaver Creek Township, where you have the wetlands put in instead of a retention pond. And I would love to know how that is working because it's something that, if it is working like I think it should, that we would love to share with other townships and municipalities as a way to go to help mitigate the harmful effect of stormwaters.
That hasn't been in effect long enough to have had an effect yet. We haven't had any new developments proposed since we took that initiative. So we'll see how it works. But we do have, this is, back to something that Bill just said, about the cost of stream bank erosion. We're about to embark on a contract, we'll be issuing the request for proposals tomorrow that will spend some $25,000 to clear woody debris out of the Little Miami River on just a few hundred feet, a few hundred-foot section of the Little Miami River that is just completely clogged with fallen trees and other woody debris, as well as a little bit of junk, but the main problem is the trees and they fall into the river because of stream bank erosion. And stream bank erosion becomes, is there because we develop and we develop and we develop. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the rule of thumb is that once you exceed 10% coverage of the watershed in impervious surface, every additional square foot of coverage with impervious surface creates a negative impact on the watershed.
Discreet.
The Little Miami River is currently at 12 or 13% coverage with impervious surface across the entire watershed. That's an enormous amount of pavement and rooftops and other things, but it's pavement. And in Beaver Creek Township, that pace isn't slowing down. It's becoming more and more difficult for developers to find property to develop here that doesn't have floodplain impacts and other more urgent stormwater management issues than we previously encountered when the township was wide open and all rural. Now, what's left to develop, all has floodplain, some floodplain in it. And so if we're not on top of how we want this floodplain treated when their applications come to us, if like Bill said, we don't make it clear what our expectations are upfront, we can't expect those expectations to be met after the fact. Mitigation isn't what developers do. They want to develop.
They want to develop, they want, they want certainty from us upfront when they buy the property. They want to know what they're going to have to do with the floodplain. And so, there is one, uh, proposal that we think is making its way to us, for a piece of property that does include significant floodplain. And we're, we're working with Beaver Creek Wetlands Association to put protections in place now before the property gets sold. And so, uh, the, but, but it would be enormously helpful if we had something in our code that we could point to and say, "We're not treating you any differently than anybody else. Here it is, it's in the code. Everybody who wants to develop here gets treated the same way." So, thank, thank you.
There's some, there's some areas of the watershed like Kettering and Beaver Creek that are almost completely built out. Um, and so that puts a big, uh, um, the headwaters, uh, area that's in, impervious hardscape service, and it has a tremendous effect on the rest of the river. So what you all do is really important, and I'm so glad that you all are revisiting your, your, uh, rules and regulations and codes or whatever you call them, uh, so that you're upfront and, and proactive.
In, in some respects, it's not fair. I mean, uh, if you look at, if, if you look back four or five decades ago, you know, Aitken and Kettering built out. Okay, they, they built out. They all had small floodplains on those streams. They allowed them to be filled. They allowed a lot of the streams to be piped underground. Uh, they went into culvers. And, you know, they build out, oh, nobody will, nobody will care, you know, what happened to this. We're just, we're gonna trench this one, we're gonna put it underground, we're gonna channelize this one. But all of that water got expressed somewhere. And it got expressed, if you're on this side of Route forty-eight, if you're on the east side of Route forty-eight, it got expressed into Green County. And ever since we lost those, all those small pieces of wetlands and floodplain, our problems have been on the rise. And, uh, and now, we follow suit. We do the same thing, then, you know, we're no better than they were. And then we're pushing it downstream to everybody else. So, at, at some point, somebody has to defend the Alamo. And, uh, I think that's what we're asking, we're asking for people to defend the Alamo. Somebody else talk, I gotta plug in my computer before it goes dead.
I, you know, don't want to, uh, speak for the commissioners here, but I, I think that was an excellent kind of brief on the importance of mitigating, uh, you know, stormwater runoff and, and adding protections into our code to kind of, uh, you know, fulfill that goal. I think you've given us, uh, some things to think about. And, um, as I said, Mr. Shangman, um, I would be really interested in, in having you kind of collaborate when it is time for us to kind of look at our, our flood, the part of our code that deals with floodplain and, and, uh, those kind of issues. I, I'd be glad to, to have you in on those discussions, so. Uh, really appreciate you, you guys coming and speaking with us tonight and, and kind of opening our eyes to this important issue. We really do appreciate that.
And, and Hope, I owe you a, a bit of an apology. The case that I talked about with you on the phone the other day is coming up next month, not tonight.
Well, I'd love to be, um, I'd love to be zoomed in on it so I can, I learn more about that case.
We'll send you the.
It sounds interesting. And I really want to thank you all for, uh, revising your, um, your plans. And hopefully, uh, we can use them as, um, best practices and take them around to other communities in the area and suggest they follow suit. So, thank you very much.
And, and I want to, I want to draw your attention to those two websites. One on page, the, the last two pages, so page three and four. The one at the, on page three, that's a EPA website. There's no need to reinvent the wheel. If you look at that, the web address is in there. There's everything you need along with model zoning ordinances. Okay, the same thing is true with the other stormwater in your community. That, that, that one is, they're both excellent, but you want to start somewhere just on stormwater and start with the one on the last page, the last item. And then under the miscellaneous right above it, we've touched on a lot of these things. I'm sure they'll be in your new Article fifteen. We'll, we'll try to work with you on compensatory storage, but stormwater management piece. I mean, that's a, a, if you haven't heard about it, that's something you need to know about. We all know about biosquamous green garden. Educational program, the community support. I mean, that's, those are the nuggets of gold. If you don't have that, you'll never get it done. I'm gonna shut up now. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you both for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe, everyone.
Take care. Thanks.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Uh, if you guys have any questions or discussion, feel free. Um, I will go ahead and send you the, uh, the handout that you sent via email. You can take a look at that at your leisure. Um, and I'm sure you will be seeing something coming up probably in about two or four months with the Alamo does deal with something similar to, to what's been spoken about here, so. Thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is case number eight, eighteen. And is there a public hearing notice that has to go along with that?
I can reread it, sure. It's the, it's the same one as the original, but just to remind you. I can read that. "The purpose of the hearing is so the zoning commission may review and act on a proposed amendment to the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution being proposed by the Beaver Creek Township Community Development and Risk Department. The proposed amendment would add a section to Article eighteen which requires the township to first obtain approval from any easement holder before issuing permits for structures within any easement. This hearing was originally scheduled to occur on November fifth, twenty twenty, but was postponed due to lack of a quorum of measure."
All right. So, because we're in a virtual world, I think we're already open, right?
Yes.
To the public portion of the hearing?
It was open, it was open at the October first meeting and was not, it was not closed.
So we're still in the open session. So if we have visitors, which I think we still do, if you want to make comments in the chat, then someone can monitor that chat? Do we have a monitor of the chat?
Sure.
Okay.
Can all, uh, monitor the chat here. Um, you could also, if you so choose, you could let anybody who's on the Teams meeting take their speaking time that way.
Sure, sure.
It does not appear that anyone jumped into that opportunity, so.
So you can't do it wrong today. Just jump in and talk and we'll listen. How's that sound? So direct me if you will. Are we merely to a place where we're finishing up some of that discussion? Do we, just tell me next phases of the meeting.
So, and Dawn might be able to help me out here, but my understanding is that we essentially stopped discussion on the subject to continue the, the hearing to a later date. So if you were to essentially begin where you left off, that I believe is the way to move forward. But, but again, Dawn, you, you may have some, some guidance here.
No, that's correct. I mean, and I don't recall how much discussion we had about this the first time it came up. But, um, you know, if we can just pick up from there, any discussion amongst the board. If there's not any public comment, um, and then just go from there.
Right, so I guess I need a little refresher, Lori, where we left off on that.
Oh, well, you've got the minutes in front.
Yeah, let's look at the minutes.
Let's check them out.
Is it, was it the September third?
No, that would be the October first.
Oh.
Yeah, you can take a look through those as I, I love anyone who's finished very late this afternoon or would have too soon. Do you want to just re, kind of, review through there? That'll hopefully.
Do you want me to read it out loud a little bit?
Oh, no, you're, you're fine if you guys just want to take a few minutes to just kind of review and.
While you are, I can try to provide some highlights from my memory of kind of the points of discussion and, and maybe, um, some actions that we took, uh, following that. Um, I remember, you know, of course, the, one of the big points of discussion was that what we're asking, does, uh, it restricts the ability of the property owner to use all of their land?
Mm-hmm.
So that's a big point of contention. Um, we believe that the public interest, uh, the good of all in this sense, um, outweighs perhaps the individual right to use all of his property however they see fit. Um, but that is a trade-off that we're asking you to make here. It's not asked lightly. Um, I can tell you that in bringing this through regional plannings, uh, executive and then full committee review process, regional planning is frankly ecstatic with this language. They support this wholeheartedly. Um, they have been speaking to us about, you know, should we try to show this to other townships as a model? Um, it's, you know, it's protection that's frankly needed. And I believe the, the speakers before kind of gave you a number of reasons why stormwater protection and drainage easement protection is very important. Um, so not having been approved by regional planning, um, you know, again, with, kind of with aplomb, I, I would say speaks to the, the positive nature of this change that we're asking you to make.
Yeah, I think that's what comes back to my mind now is that we know all these easements were there. If they're about utilities or, um, anything but soil and water, it's, you know, like common sense that one would realize they shouldn't put some, a structure there. But if they do, they're doing it at their own risk. The problem with water and soil is that it will, has mo, it has an impact to, uh, those adjacent properties and how much impact and then who becomes responsible for that bill and that destruction. And so, if I recall, we were all having that discussion. We just want a regional planning to take a look at the text and see what they thought. And then we would come back and hash it out again. Okay, here we are, hashing it out.
Hashing it out.
Hashing it out, so.
And actually, regional planning's response was very startling to the point. They had no problems with it at all.
I did also include in the packet a response from, um, keep it just a moment.
Ken.
Ken.
Well, uh, it was from, uh, this was actually, yeah, from Ken. Um, who, again, was kind of the, the original impetus for, for this request was, you know, we, we began sending any permits that we issued that were in easements over to Ken. And just as a, hey, we're issuing this so you're aware, perhaps you might want to check, uh, you know. And after so many, he was like, "Look, what's going on here? You guys are, this is crazy. You guys are doing this way too often. Can we put a stop to this? This is potentially dangerous." All these things that we've talked about. Um, and this was just, you know, after speaking with him, I said, "If you would please submit, you know, kind of a formal statement to that effect, just so it can be in the record." So, so we have that here as well. Um, you know, I mean, I, I, again, I think that presentation really drove it home for me. We saw the precipitation levels on the rise.
Well, for sure, yes.
As more impervious surfaces are built.
And block.
We have to be even more vigilant, um, so.
And we have a resolution from the county commissioners at this point about, about our area and the importance of the water and the watershed. So, um, what other conversation do we need, you guys? Those of you in a virtual world, what are you thinking?
I guess my attention turns to when somebody comes to pull permits and maybe they're unaware that the improvements in, uh, drainage easement, what are the steps for the department going to be to assist the applicant in, uh, being able to find out who they might need to run the improvement by to potentially get approval?
Sure, um, great question. So, the plan is if this is approved, is that the department would produce kind of a, a table, as it were, of, you know, if it's a drainage easement, this would be the person that you'd need to contact. That would be something that we could have. It'd be something that, once we were sure of its correctness, we could post online as well. Um, but also, I, I will tell you that our office is, is based in customer service. I mean, if, if we get a call, we will help people find their parcel number. You know, we'll talk out and help somebody fill out an application online. So when we run into this issue, and what'll most likely happen is somebody will submit a permit and we'll do our diligence. We'll check it against the flat record and see perhaps that it's in an easement. We'll have to contact them back and say, "Unfortunately, we cannot issue this permit as it is because it's invalid or, you know, it conflicts with this section of the code." At which point, just like with any other potential issue, we would explain to them how they could then be in compliance. There are two things they could do. Either change the, where it's gonna go and explain to them, you know, "We made this because of these reasons. It's very important." So if you could see it, to put it outside of the easement. But then the other option would be to put them in touch with the organization that would eventually be able to give them authorization, which we would devise a simple, you know, kind of a check sheet form and kind of send that out to them and say, "Hey, look, uh, you know, this is something that you could fill out and sign and that would give us your consent." Um, if we don't have that, we don't issue the permit. Um, so that would be a, I think, a simple thing to hand to the applicant along with the contact information of whomever they need to contact for the type of easement that they want to build in. If they can't obtain that signature, that says to us, "Okay, now the only option is you have to rearrange what you want to do and put it outside of the easement." Um, so those would be the steps that we take if it ever arose that somebody wanted to, you know, to submit a permit with something inside of the easement.
Although I believe Dawn did say they have the right to go before the board is in the appeals.
Yeah, I guess that's, that could be true.
If they're not happy with our decision.
Correct, just like any other, um, um, you know, uh, variance from any section of the code. I can tell you unequivocally that staff's recommendation is gonna be an emphatic no. If someone wants to bring that to the VZA, they have every right to. But they'll be fighting against our staff recommendation for all the reasons we just listed.
And they would advise of staff's decision prior to them applying. We would let them know that we couldn't support it. I mean, and must, at that point, it's their choice if they still choose to proceed. But we would, we would let them know that we, we couldn't recommend it. So they, they will be aware of that ahead of time. Is that what your question said?
Early.
Thank you.
John, did you have thoughts?
You know, funny, actually, you know, I've just been listening, uh, to what's going on here. I realize that it's concerned about, you know, what happens to the property owners. You know, they're unaware what's going on. But, you know, the flip side of that is, you know, from my own personal experience, it's not difficult to figure out if something's maybe in some sort of floodplain or could potentially have an issue. And there's a lot of public resource to be had in Green County, so. I, 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 the process, the methods described, it seems very, uh, visible to me. I've got no objections to the proposal.
It really is about any improvement or, or that's brought forth. So the question that I have is, if they don't apply, what?
If they why?
If they don't apply and they put something.
Well, if I find, if, if I typically get a report or somebody, we have people that will call in and ask if their neighbor pulled a permit for that fence or that accessory structure or.
It's the, it's the burying of, um, tile drainage, you know, the, the drainage and it's the putting the trees in those areas too that are sometimes problematic for.
Well, that would fly as well. That's considered, I guess, a structure.
Terminal structure.
Somebody decides to plant trees where
Exactly.
the easement is and it for some reason disturbs the flow of water or trees.
It's the flow of water and the impact that, that go, it's the backflow to the other.
I mean, just like a fence
Right.
or an accessory structure
Right.
that's encroaching, if it's blocking drainage.
Yeah.
It would have to be removed.
Yeah. Except cattails, I like those.
A couple of points, uh, you know, we, we don't require a zoning permit to plant a tree.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be something that, I mean, we wouldn't have control over one way or the other.
Yeah.
Um, and to be. Um, and to be completely honest, there is the potential, just like with any other zoning structure or rule, that somebody in bad faith, uh, attempts to, or maybe in good faith, just out of ignorance, um, does not submit for a permit for, uh, but, but as Lori stated, whether through our regular inspections of the township, and we actually just caught a farm going up in the floodplain earlier this week or last week, um, or through neighbor kind of participation, we'll say. Um, we're typically made aware of these potentially prominent structures one way or another. Um, so.
Okay. Well, I think that we're ready to entertain, um, moving forward on this. If someone wants to consider that. John, did you have any change in it that you wanted to recommend?
Not at all.
Okay, okay. So.
None for me either.
Okay. So, you brought the motion to us, right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
What's the Roberts rules on that then? We just.
Well, uh, I would, well, so actually, you technically made a motion to bring this legislation to, for the RPCC to review.
Okay.
So, now it's come back to you. It is upon you to, again, make a motion to either, you know, approve this, uh, or, uh.
Recommend approval to the trustees?
Yeah, yeah. And I don't have to do anything with closing the, closing it.
Well, we, we should close the public, the public portion. After we've made sure there was nobody.
There's nobody here that wants to, right?
Nobody wants to speak. They were given an opportunity, so.
All right. So, I am officially closing the public portion of the meeting.
Now we can entertain a motion.
Now we can entertain a motion.
Okay, so I move to approve the proposed amendment that would add a section to Article eighteen.
And to be clear, that is this language that's in the yellow highlight on the, the thing today, correct?
Correct.
All right. Second?
Second.
Was that you, John?
Yes, Seth.
No, that was Seth.
That was Seth, okay.
John can't take credit for it.
My best John impression.
All right.
Well, we, I lost your picture, so I wasn't sure who was, who was talking there.
I don't think we have any more discussion on it.
Ready for a vote?
I think so.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
No.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next on the agenda. Applying the Acts One Aviation Support District. And so, I am assuming that staff has a report for us.
Basically, what I'm asking for is, uh, similar to, uh, the last time, as we changed kind of process. What we now require is, if we, the township, would like to bring something forward of our own accord, you first need to make a motion for us to bring that to regional planning for consideration. Uh, this time, we would be asking for a map amendment. And we'd like to apply the AX one Aviation Support District that you previously passed and recommended to the trustees. We'd like to begin applying that to the thirteen parcels um, owned by the airport. Um, so what we'd be asking for you is to make a motion so that we could bring that to regional planning for their review. And then it would hopefully, pending their, you know, approval, would be in front of you for January.
Coming back to us?
Yes. I'll be happy to entertain any questions or comments or anything about that.
It's just, uh, getting the process starting, correct?
Sure.
So, do I say that or do we need to talk about it? What's the process for this?
If you are all in agreeance, or agreement rather, you could make a motion to, uh, you could make a motion to bring a map amendment to regional planning for their review for the application of the AX one Aviation Support District.
Okay. So, zoning members, let's talk for a minute. Does anybody have anything they wanna say about this? Do you, are you opposed to it in favor of this motion? They need a, they need the motion to process to begin the effort that we have already said we thought was a good idea. Okay.
Make the motion.
Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that you, um, begin the process of developing the map and the text, uh, take it to regional planning and come back to us with, with it all together for us to review.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second.
Mr. Axell?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Would you like to do the minutes or would you like to talk about format?
Uh, why don't you guys go ahead and do the minutes and we'll, uh, talk about some of that.
We've already listened to October.
Yeah, we've already listened to October. So, the, the approval of minutes, uh, for September the third. And, um, I have to, uh, recuse myself from it because I wasn't here.
That's true. For the September third meeting of those that are attending tonight, we have, uh, Mr. Axell, Mr. Geist, and this one.
Yeah, John, you know, so the three of you wanna look over that and let us know what you think.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second.
All right. Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Moving on to the October first, I believe we've all looked over that.
We've definitely looked over that.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve October's minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Mr. Horton, or excuse me, Ms. Horton?
Oh, yes. I'm, I'm here, yes.
Mr. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
I should've said yes, like with a lower voice.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the last friendly amendment was for us to discuss about the format of the meeting, uh, given a change in our pandemic levels.
So, uh, if you will, a couple of key, uh, factors that made me wanna bring this up for discussion. Um, recently, there's been, uh, difficulty or, uh, even somebody who is unfortunately still quarantining from COVID. Uh, there's also the potential for transmission here in this room. Um, unfortunately, in Green County, we've risen steadily from, um, orange to, to now red and, and Montgomery County, our neighbor, is now at the highest level.
Carolina!
Oh, we should send her out, yeah.
I believe it's, A, you're prerogative to decide the format of your own meetings. Um, and B, I think it is prudent to at least bring this up for discussion whether or not we would like to return to the virtual meeting format that we kind of went through for a couple of months there at the beginning of this pandemic. I would argue that the, the danger is greater now than it was then based purely on the data available to us. Um, I will leave that as my piece and why I brought it forward, but this is really a discussion for you members about what you're comfortable with. We will continue to do this type of meeting or move to further, but don't take that into account. It's what will allow you to continue to come to these meetings in a safe and, and comfortable manner.
So, I'm very happy that you brought it up. I, um, I think that we can, we have all learned enough about the virtual world of running things in a public. I think we can manage it. I think it's only wise and I think it's prudent. And so, I would like to make a motion that we don't wait, need to wait until it's purple. As long as you all can assure us that public notices are going out and that we have public access.
We've got all the administrative stuff handled on our end.
I think, I just think it's the right thing to do.
We've got enough, um, technological talent here that can pick you all up, so.
Yeah, that's what I.
I do not include myself in that group, so.
Obviously, me neither, since I was having a horrible thing with my microphone, but I'll work on improving my, uh.
But we know where the chat is now. You can chat, you know.
I've been doing Zoom, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we've got it down.
So, I can talk that way too, so, yes.
Yeah, I.
It's true.
So, I've made that motion.
You've become a professional.
I've made that motion.
Me the motion, okay. I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, remind me, what, what, what motion exactly are we making?
To change our, um, meeting format to all virtual.
I would say though, until we go back down to what?
Virtual.
I mean, there has to be an end to it.
Until.
Can I make a suggestion, put a timeline on it?
We need a timeline on it, so.
Till I, till I come back and revisit it next, see if you still have.
Next time in January.
I think maybe a standing discussion section on the agenda, asking whether or not to revert back to in-person meetings would be prudent.
I agree.
To an undefined date, leaving it an agenda item for discussion until resolved. Good? Whoa, good.
Yeah. That's impressive.
That's true.
Wrapping up, there we. Snack or gavel, there you go.
As an agenda item for discussion.
So, let it be done.
Randy, was that okay?
All right. So, you made the motion.
I did.
Let's get a second.
Kristen did.
Oh, Kristen did. Ms., Ms. Horton.
Ms. Horton. And I did spell your name right again.
Thank you, darling. I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Axell?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Geist?
I'm not real sure I'm gonna vote on that, 'cause I won't be up to ten, so I don't know whether I should stay.
You can call in. They have a Zoom call in.
You can call in, you can call.
Yeah, you.
You can do audio. You don't have to do it.
You can do telephone.
And Mr. Geist, if you really technologically, for whatever reason, can't make this happen, we will accommodate you, bring you into the room and.
Well, that, that's fine, okay, 'cause I don't have internet service where my house, I have to stand outside. Cell phone.
That'll be good in January.
You will feel very lonely.
In January, yeah. In January, that's gonna be great.
Can we go ahead and vote?
I'll vote yes then.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Okay. We'll, we'll hook you up, Bob.
I'm in the black hole of Beaver Creek Township.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Geist has, as, uh, as, um, Max has stated that, and just as a, as a side note, I think Max and I discussed that we can, uh, implement other, um, other activities on the Zoom that allow for better communications in regards to knowing Lori needs specific, uh, uh, vote counts. Uh, we can do something, whether it's in the chat or something like that. So, details more to come as we're developing.
We're, we're learning and we'll, we'll.
We'll learn.
I have to CTU onto that now, so I'm doing my live chats on Zoom.
And you just push the little button and it records it for you? Did you know that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
And it downloads the whole, the whole Word document?
Yeah, it's pretty interesting.
Very cool.
I'm just only gonna, though, dress from here up, so.
All right.
Be careful.
I know, I see some of those, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it didn't have pants on, yeah. I'll, I'll keep that in mind.
All right. Well.
All right.
Everything on the agenda has been handled. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, is that, is that John or?
Seth.
Seth, I'm telling you.
No, they're on it.
I think you're on a second.
Yeah, he's like, oh, yeah.
And that's why I made the suggestion of writing stuff down.
Yeah.
Lori can't distinguish.
Mr. Axell?
Yes.
Mr. Geist?
Yes.
Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Hahn?
Yep.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
All right.
All right.